She's here?
No. Where is she? Oh, look at that. I wonder if she's pro or against something.
Smile at you.
Make sure my phone's on.
Where's my TV?
Just put the agenda on.
It is my fault. I will own it.
Oh, okay.
I was on social media making a big stink.
I'm gonna try to get it from the city's website here real quick.
Good evening, and this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council for Monday, August the 5th, 2019. Good evening, welcome everybody. Nice to see everybody out and about on this lovely night. I'll call this meeting in order. Invocation this evening will be given by the Reverend Ron Van Lent of the First United Methodist Church, and thank you for being here this evening.
You're welcome. Thank you for inviting me. Let us pray. Creator of all, giver of life, we meet still with heavy hearts for the people of El Paso and Dayton, the families who have suffered tragedy there, and give thanks for their civil authorities and police and first responders and medical personnel who are dealing with the aftermath of this weekend shootings. We gather knowing that no one is immune from senseless tragedy. So be with us as we meet this evening. We need to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future, and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. As trusted servants, we seek our blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well. May we be open to others' ideas and beliefs, respectful of our differences, not threatened by them. May we grow an understanding of our own motives, knowing that people often act out of their own fears. May we be a force for replacing fear with insight, helping us all to be patient and kind as we talk. We are of diverse opinion here, yet we wish to mend our differences and reach agreement satisfactory to all. Please share a little of your wisdom with us to help us do right by all concerned. Thank you for your heavenly blessings. Amen.
Thank you again for coming, Ron. If you'll now join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call. Travis?
Chris Campbell.
Here.
Clark Gruber.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
Steve Schlock.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here. Next, we have the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? See none? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion's approved. Next, we have the consent agenda items A through G.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through G.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Public comments? None. This is roll call vote.
Campbell?
Yes.
Gruber?
Yes.
Reiser?
Yes.
Schlock?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. That takes us to new business. The city council will be asked to consider approval of the following special event applications. First, we have special event 2019-22 Icebreakers 2019 to be held on January the 31st, 2020, at 5:00 PM until February the 2nd, 2020, at 3:00 PM. And then, you guys wanna take the two Icebreaker ones together? If you so, I'll read them both.
Ninety-degree weather today. Nothing says Icebreaker like ninety-degree weather.
Let's do them both. Let's do them both. Let's do the special event 2019-23 Break the Ice 5K 2020 to be held February the 1st, 2020, from 10:00 AM until 12:00 PM with the Race to Follow the Route outlined in the map included in the packet. So, Brian, wanna just tell us on those two?
Yeah, members of council, the staffs reviewed these. These are regular routine events. No concerns being voiced by any of the departments. Again, special events are just regulating the use of public property. No concerns here. We believe they're ready for approval.
Sounds good, thanks. I guess I need a motion, don't I?
I'll make a motion to approve special event 2019-22 and special event 2019-23.
Sounds good. Are there any council comments on these events? We'll hope for good, cold, snowy, twenty-below weather for this event. Sounds nice today. Any public questions or comments on Icebreaker 2020? All right, see none? All's in favor, say, what's that?
Do we have a second?
Yeah, did we get a second?
Nope, we need a second.
What's that?
We need a second still.
I'll second.
I thought we had a motion and a second. All right, sorry. We got a motion and a second? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. It is approved. Next, special event 2019-24, the RE/MAX Hot Air Balloon, to be held on August the 10th, 2019, from 5:30 PM until 8:30 PM at Kids Corner. I'll wait for the motion and second.
I'll make a motion that we approve special event 2019-24 RE/MAX Hot Air Balloon to be held on August 10th, 2019, from 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM at Kids Corner.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Desette?
This is the second year for this event. It's as simple as the application. The intent is to set up a hot air balloon at Kids Corner. The hot air balloon will be tethered, and then free rides up and down, and the hot air balloon will be offered to any member of the public.
Sounds good. Appreciate it. We have a motion and a second. Any council questions on this one? Comments on this one? Very straight ahead. It went always good last year.
No complaints.
It was all good. No complaints, very good. Any public questions or comments on this one? All right, see none? We have a motion and a second. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. It is approved. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item eight. City council will be asked to consider approval of Resolution 2019-37, a resolution requesting the city of South Haven issue local development bonds, Series 2019, general obligation limited tax as part of the proposed Center Street reconstruction project.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-37, a resolution requesting the city of South Haven issue local development bonds, Series 2019, as part of the proposed Center Street reconstruction project.
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second. All right, Brian, when do we start?
Sure. Some members of council over the last several months have taken a variety of actions related to the reconstruction of Center Street. As we enter the month of August, it's really getting much closer. Our intent is to move into the project just after Labor Day. The council has given a tentative award to Kaling Construction for the reconstruct of Center Street. This is one of the final items that the council will be asked to take. The intent is to issue a portion of debt through the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, now named Eagle. Using Eagle's SRF, it's the State Revolving Fund, portion of the utility work will be funded with that. So, as we've talked about in the past, we're kind of, what I would describe as cascading the finances on this. We are using a variety of funding sources from Eagle through the SRF, the State Revolving Fund, through the DWRF, the Drinking Water Revolving Fund, through DDA debt, as well as through MEDC grant funding and USDA grant funding. So this is one of those portions. And we are moving forward with the issuance of the SRF bonds, and for that to occur, council will need to take action tonight. Downtown Development Authority has already seen this and blessed it. It's now on to council for that final approval.
Very good. And when do we hope to start?
Just after Labor Day.
After Labor Day. So get ready to avoid Center Street. Well, on the road.
Yeah.
You can still shop.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, just to be clear, tonight's authorization is for up to $500,000 in SRF bonds. We anticipate the final cost to be closer to $420,000. There is some cushion built into it. Despite that cushion, we will only issue the amount actually needed for the project.
Very good, thank you.
Yep.
Any council questions?
Mm-mm.
See none? Any public questions on this? This is good stuff. This is Center Street reconstruction, so that's very encouraging. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2019-37. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. It is approved. Next, city council will be asked to take the following actions related to the proposed commercial rehab application for 315 and 317 Broadway. First, we need to just host a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to open a public hearing. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. It's opened up. Brian?
Members of council, we do have Scott Nairn-Zewitt, as well as their kids. August McLean are here. The council's being asked to give consideration to a rehab abatement for 315 and 317 Broadway. I think the council and the public would recognize this generally as the rock and road location. In your packet tonight, there is a full application from Scott Nairn. They are seeking to invest a significant amount of money into their site. That will include upgrades to the facade, as well as roof, AC, and other improvements. At this moment, they anticipate to invest up to $150,000, and estimate two full-time jobs and three part-time jobs will be created and eight jobs retained during the, as a result of the rehabilitation. The council has now been using the commercial rehab abatement tools since September 17th, 2018, when the council first adopted the commercial rehab district. This property is within the district. This property is one that really falls under exactly what this district was created to do, which is to help create a commercial tool to allow for redevelopment of existing properties. The family is here tonight. Should the council wish to ask them any questions, they can certainly field them. From staff and the city's attorney's perspective, we would recommend approval of the application as written.
Sounds good. Thank you, Brian. Well, this is the public hearing portion, so does anybody from the public wish to comment on this project? All right, nobody. Anybody wanna close the public hearing?
Mom and dad looked nervous, but the kids just didn't care.
I say, I was gonna ask the kids for a question, but I won't. I won't do it.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion and second to close the public hearing. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, it's closed. So now we're on to approving Resolution 2019-39, a resolution to submit the proposed, oops, sorry about that, don't mind me, wrong one. Motion to approve Resolution 2019-38, a resolution and agreement to approve a Commercial Rehab Act, PA 2010, tax abatement for the proposed commercial redevelopment at 315 and 317 Broadway.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-38, as written.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to recuse myself from this vote for, remove any potential conflict of interest.
Very good, thank you. I guess I'll just say, thanks for improving the building. How's that sound? That building has needed it. Thank you for doing it, so we appreciate your taking the initiative. So to you and your family, thank you very much for the work. So, all right, motion and a second to approve Resolution 2019-38. No other comments? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. It is approved. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. And you're free to sneak out if you'd like. This would be a, go ahead. You just tile right ahead. You go right ahead. Next, city council will be asked, yeah, oh yeah, go ahead. City council will be asked to review a proposed initiated ordinance and determine how it wishes to proceed. And on this one, I think I'm just gonna defer right off the bat to Brian and Nick to get us kicked off here.
Yeah, so members of council, you can see the room is packed. You have a somewhat unique challenge in front of you. We do have a citizen's petition that is on tonight's agenda. The petition seeks to have an ordinance considered by either the city council or by the public. For tonight, I'm gonna have Nick walk you through exactly what this petition says, what the ordinance would say, and then what your options are as council for consideration. Nick?
Just a little bit of quick background on how we got here. In February, which was fairly shortly after the, after voters approved the new recreational marijuana legislation in Michigan, the city council adopted an ordinance that temporarily, at least temporarily, opted the city out of recreational marijuana businesses within the city of South Haven, and it also directed the planning commission to study the issue to where it could possibly be revisited with a new ordinance that might allow one or more of those business types within the city. The planning commission did that study over a course of about five months, came up with a recommendation from a zoning perspective of where those new business types might fit within the city, and that council, that ordinance has been presented to the city council, but no action has been taken on it to this point. So as things currently stand, marijuana businesses, recreational marijuana businesses are not lawful within the city of South Haven. We have an ordinance that temporarily opts the city out, contemplates possible future action. That brings us to today and the instant petition. There is a petition that's been submitted to the city clerk, signed by at least 105 city residents, asking that the ordinance be amended to remove the provisions that contemplate the possible allowance of new marijuana businesses in the future. So the proposed ordinance looks a lot like what the city council already has, what the city already has in the books, but all the provisions that talk about planning commission study and a potential new ordinance would be taken out of the ordinance, and there's a red line in your packet that shows exactly how the language would change. The city council has two options. The first option would be to just adopt the new ordinance as proposed by the petition sponsors. The second option would be to adopt a resolution to put it to a vote. That vote would occur at the November general election. If passed at that November general election, the ordinance, according to the city charter, would be in place and would have to be in place for at least a year before it could be revisited. I know it's a lot of information. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Clarification?
Yes.
You kept saying we've opted out temporarily. The way I understand it is if we don't opt in, it stays opted out.
That's correct. I said it, at least temporarily. So the ordinance contemplates potentially, it talks about, you know, planning commission study and potentially adopting a new ordinance, but if you never did anything again, you would be opted out.
Still be opted out.
You'd still be opted out.
Thank you.
Nick, one question I have is the proposed ordinance talks about marijuana establishments, and I know there's different categories of recreational marijuana in the voter-approved ballot initiative. Does the proposed ordinance that we're looking at tonight rule out any kind of marijuana establishment as far as grow facilities, testing facilities, et cetera?
Yes, but it is for medical only. So marijuana establishments is a term that's used in the new statute, the recreational statute, but the term medical marijuana facilities is used in the prior statute. So this ordinance would affect only the recreational facilities. Now, the city has not currently opted into medical either at this point, but this particular ordinance wouldn't necessarily preclude that.
To his point, though, even including recreational, it would include laboratory testing or whatnot.
Correct. It's all the types of businesses authorized under the recreational statute.
Okay. Well, just to start the discussion, we really, we have two options before us, and I am gonna suggest that we move this thing in a relatively, you know, efficient fashion to the ballot. I feel that, you know, I wanna thank everybody for coming, first of all, and I, you know, most importantly, I wanna start out by saying I respect the rights of, you know, individuals to voice their opinions, including the right to vote. Clearly, we voted on this before, and we're gonna likely vote on it again. You know, just as, to recall, 2008, we did vote in medical marijuana. Ten years later, we voted in recreational marijuana. So we have seen this, we've been talking about it. And, you know, with the votes, the state passed it back to the cities, and we have been talking about this. If you've been, you know, to any of these meetings, we've been talking about it a lot. Many would fault us for we've talked about it too much. We've had it at the planning commission. We've had it at city council. We've been very diligent, we've been very thoughtful. Nick's been here multiple times, this, you know, this group has been through this multiple times, and we'll continue to have that discussion. We've not rushed. We've waited for the state to establish their rules, and at times, that's taken a while as well. We've waited, tried to understand what's going on with them. We've toured facilities. We've been to grow facilities. We've been to processing facilities, dispensaries, just tried to figure out what we're getting into, because this was passed to us, and they said, you figure this out. And I must admit, I have a day job. I have other things that I do, too. I have a family I raise, and I'm curious, 'cause I'm concerned. One of my concerns is, what's this, you know, what's it gonna smell like? I mean, we all have these, you know, thoughts, ideas, and concerns. So we've been looking, studying, trying to figure out what's best. You know, we've heard about the economic benefits, we've heard about the economic pitfalls. We've listened, we're talking, we're listening. I just cannot in good faith approve the ordinance as submitted, because I think it stops the dialogue. I think we've gone through this very intentionally. You know, there's, George's question, what about a laboratory? We have a laboratory here in town that could add work if they're allowed to test some of these samples. So to just say nope, I think is the wrong answer. So I think we should have that dialogue, have that discussion, and really figure out what's best for this community. So I think to stop it now is premature, so in that regard, I would suggest it go to the ballot. So that's, would be my initial, you know, thought for this group. So I know I have a few that wanna make some comments. Why don't I start to my right?
Yeah. I think this is one of those times where people should hear from their city council person what they think, because there's a lot of people second-guessing what we're Tonight, we're not voting on whether we accept it, whether we support it, we don't support it. Tonight, we're simply deciding whether the public should have the option and make the decision. I don't have a problem with the public making that decision. I talked to the author of the petition, who's sitting right here in front of us, and I'm fine with it. Here's my concern about the second part of this, and that is for us tonight to say that we will accept the petition as written and not have it go to the public. And I strongly feel that's wrong for the following reasons. The petition calls for an election of all residents in November. If the city were to vote yes on enacting it today, we would in fact be not honoring the intent of the petition, which is allow all residents to vote. So far, we have about 125 people that have signed a petition. There's over 1,000 voting residents in this town. Everyone should have an opportunity to vote on this, not 125. The city council is voted in by the residents to represent the residents. If we were to vote tonight to accept the petition, we would not be doing our job. We'd only be representing those 125 people. Third thing, during the next few months, the city council will have the opportunity to listen to the planning commission's findings and discuss with the lawyer the newly enacted state laws. For example, two weeks ago, I brought to the city's attorney and to the city staff something in a newspaper right here, saying the state has gone out of its way to pick 19 communities, that they're gonna create incentives for them to accept recreational marijuana. That should, that information should be known to us before we make a decision. If we decided tonight to accept this petition, we would be not accepting any additional information or the planning commission's information. Between now and November election, on the petition, city council will have to weigh in or vote on each of the five separate pieces of the recreational marijuana, and the mayor just alluded to that. I cannot support taking a broad-brush approach and turning down all five pieces in the petition without looking at each one individually. Each one should be weighed on its own, and that's how we initially weighed in months ago on all five pieces. Lastly, the city council has already voted to opt out, as Steve just mentioned, on recreational marijuana, so I see no reason in, to favor immediately taking this position. Lastly, and I think this is important, and I can only speak for myself, I have been asked more than once, and I've seen it just today in writing, does the city, or does a city council person have financial interests in whatever decisions made? So again, I'll speak for myself and for Ward 1 in particular. I have said since the day I ran, I have no financial interest in anything in this city other than my own home, so I have nothing to gain or lose. That's all. Thanks.
Very good. I'll come on down.
So I guess maybe one more question for Nick. So, say, for example, we go forward and we get a chance to go with our original plan, which was to develop some proposed ordinances on our own for recreational marijuana. Does the current ballot initiative language allow us to pick and choose what types of recreational marijuana businesses we can have in our city?
No. If this were to pass, it would, if this were to-
I'm not saying if this were to pass. If we were, say this did not pass, and it got voted down in November, and we went forward with our original plan, which is develop our own ordinances, can we pick and choose the types of businesses that we have?
Yes, my opinion is that you can. There's a bit of a debate about that in the legal community, but I think the language allows that. It talks about limiting the number of businesses or limiting business, marijuana businesses within a community, and I interpret that to mean you can limit it by excluding certain categories of businesses.
Okay. Well, I see the points made by council member Reiser and Mayor Smith. When I was elected to city council, one of the things that I was elected to do was to make decisions, and in this case here, I feel that putting it, putting this off to the November election is me not doing my job. It's me not making a decision. I have learned more about marijuana than I ever intended I would ever know about marijuana, and I feel like I can make an informed decision right now, and I would be more inclined myself as to adopt the proposed ordinance as submitted. That's my comment.
So, that I understand it, the proposed ordinance, if we accept it, means nothing. We get nothing. We can't opt into anything at this point, right? Right. The ordinance is to completely prohibit recreational marijuana. So prohibit recreation completely. But by voting no-
Mr. Campbell, can you use your mic? We can agree. Thank you.
By voting no, I thought I was pretty loud. No, by voting no, then it would go to the November ballot, correct? Correct. If you vote for the resolution in your packet, that's to send the question to the ballot.
Okay, okay. Well, I'll be honest, I think I would prefer to let the people choose, so. Very good. Clark?
Yeah, I concur. The city of South Haven voted by 52% to allow recreational marijuana. Now, that was the vote for legalization. The vote wasn't to necessarily have, you know, a business downtown, so this gives the public an opportunity to weigh in on that. So, you know, I'm gonna propose the ordinance go to the general election.
This ordinance has nothing to do with the medical marijuana side, correct?
Correct.
And with us opted out of everything, basically, there doesn't need to be a decision or a vote today to be opted out of recreational, because we already opted out, correct?
Yes, the city has opted out currently.
So unless we put another resolution or ordinance on the books to opt back in, it's already illegal. already illegal, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Then I move to push it to the general election.
Any comments?
I believe that I was elected to make the best decision for not only just my ward, which is Ward 1, but also for my community. And at this time, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to agree with leaning towards adopting the proposed ordinance at this time.
Okay. Very good. And then also, just, I know another question that was asked, and just, you can, just so people are aware, this by no means changes the existing rules relative to recreational marijuana that the state enacted. So, what individuals do in their homes is, this is not touching that, just so everyone's clear. This is just, has to do with really business applications that the city could approve.
Yes, that's correct.
All right. We are at the time for some public comments. I will, why don't we, you know, we have enough that we want to get an on-deck circle going, or we'll call up one, and then just so the next person knows you'll come up. And you'll, if you can just come on up, state your name, your address, and you'll have up to five minutes to address us, and we'll try to give you a one-minute warning, and then the door, the floor will drop out from underneath you. So, be good.
So, we'll get two names going. I've got a few here that don't have a topic on it, so I'm not sure that they want to speak on this topic. So, if your name gets called and you don't, this is not the topic you were wanting to speak on, just say so, and we'll save it for later then. So, the first one up then will be Ronald Paluch, followed by Marietta Kozlik.
My name's Ronald Paluch, and I live at 1435 Clark Place. And as far as this resolution for marijuana businesses, I would vote no for it. And there's a lot of reasons behind it. Number one, you're going to get all these transients here. There'll be, you're going to be increasing your police department, your fire department. There are going to be more break-ins and everything else. So, just letting you know, I've seen it. So, that's my proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Marietta Kozlik, followed by, uh, Randy Greaves.
Good evening, Marietta.
Hi, Marietta Kozlik, 959 Hazel Street, a lifelong citizen of this community, born and raised here. I cherish this community. And so, for those of you who will reject what I'm going to propose for you to consider, please just know, I only say this because I love the city and what happens to it. I just heard one of our councilmen, Mr. Schlock, say that this has nothing to do with medical marijuana, and I wanted to bring this point to you. But first, I'm going to tell you, my husband Ronald Kozlik was felled with lung cancer fourth stage. He also had lymph cancer. We were fortunate, because we were able to get the medical marijuana permit. My husband was very fortunate in the fact that he was able to live cancer, almost cancer-free as a result of the medical marijuana. Why do I bring this up when we're talking about stores and talking about recreational? Because I believe the term recreational marijuana for these stores is improper. Those of you who have ever tried to get medical marijuana have to jump through a million hoops. Very often, time is imperative that you be able to get these different substances in different forms. Ron used what is called the Simpson oil. It took a pound of marijuana, a pound every single month, very, very expensive. The government did finally come through with a permit after four months. Mind you, I'm telling you, he had already gone through chemo. He had been given a desons. Fortunately, when that came through, and he started using the Simpson oil, Ron, within six months and three different CAT scans and MRIs, proved that the cancer, what the cancer tumor of the lung was so small, it was no longer measured. There was no evidence of lymph cancer anymore. Why do I continue to tell you this? Because once your permit runs out, the government has no interest in what you're, what you're using it for or what your condition is. They make no effort to go ahead and hurry up the renewal. My husband waited for four months. Luckily, he was already along the way where he was almost well and didn't need it. That's the major point that I wanted to make with all of you to understand, that it does concern this, because there are people who are ready to try to use it for various diseases and reasons. They don't have the support or the money to be able to buy the legal marijuana permit, which is $150 now, and the same with the renewal. Just one other thing, too. I do, I feel very strongly about the idea that people who use recreational marijuana are going to use it whether we have a store here or not. And I say, our city now has dwindled. I believe that we are less than 4,000, are we not, regular?
Forty, 4,300 last year.
Thank you. Thank you. That means any revenue that we can have as a result of, of proper use, I think, would be of value to the city. Remember, abusers are going to abuse. We're a tourist city. The tourists that come here are younger and younger. They do use recreational marijuana for wherever they can get it, and I would like to see our town have the benefit of its revenue. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you for coming tonight. Next one up.
Next, we've got Randy Greaves.
Thanks.
Okay. The next speaker will be Mary Dzelski, and then that will be followed by Jerry Jelsma.
And then if we could just, please refrain from collapse and all that good stuff. It'll just help us all out here, so, thank you.
Good evening. Mary Dzelski, I live at 225 Huron Street, here in the city. I wanted to ask actually a couple of questions, as well as make some comments, but one, you guys are talking about, you have all this information now from places you've visited and so on, but that information is not always disseminated to the community. And so, I would ask, as city council, would it be possible to put information in our local paper that helps inform us about some of the things that happen at the plants, processing or testing plants or facilities, things like that? So, that's something that, from your discussion tonight, I would appreciate some information from you guys. One of the reasons I wanted to speak was because, yes, we do have a lot of not-local people who are here all summer long. We all know that. And I guess my biggest concern with making facilities, particularly retail businesses, within the city limits. Yes, you're right. We can get it anywhere. Bangor's a great place. It's just right down the road. And I guess I would rather see recreational businesses not within our city limits. I'm a grandparent. When my grandkids come here, I'm not real excited about having all that marijuana businesses within the city limits. We bike in the area and so on, and I would just as soon have it not within our city limits. So, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Following Mr. Jelsma will be Pete Wheelie.
Hello. My name's Jerry Jelsma. I live at 516 School Street in Ward 2. And I'm most concerned about the democratic process. I think the people of South Haven, all of the people should have a voice in this matter, and not 105 petitioners making a law that is going to affect everyone. I'm particularly not for or against marijuana. I do not smoke marijuana. I do not drink alcohol. I don't smoke cigarettes. And those items, people, are as dangerous as marijuana if they're used improperly. And I think businesses selling marijuana can be regulated so that our whole community can be safe. And for those people who have signed the petition, I would recommend that they start educating the entire city about the effects of marijuana, the good parts, the bad parts, and how we can properly use it. So, I would recommend that the city council follow the mayor's advice and put it on the ballot so that we can vote on it and we can be a democratic community. Thanks.
Thank you.
Following Mr. Wheelie will be Fred Meyer.
My name is Pete Wheelie. I live at 565 Monroe Boulevard, South Haven, city resident, and also US veteran, Navy, taxpayer. I voted for marijuana legalization when it came on the ballot, and I'm also a medical marijuana patient, heart transplant, transplant patient, too. Have a lot of pain. And so, I'm, I guess, what I'm saying is, I did it for Joe, did it for Scott. I'm in favor. General voices be heard in the election. I believe that's, that's what the founding fathers want, want, want us to do, let, let people speak. So, I, one question for the council. If this were ordinance against banning alcohol source, would you opt in or opt out? Question. I know. Would you? Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Following Mr. Meyer will be Ellen Silverman.
Hi. Fred Meyer, 144 Dunkley, Unit 13. I just want to thank you guys. You, you get a lot on your plate, and you do a wonderful job, and, and I think, I appreciate, and I think the rest of us appreciate, too. And as far as my opinion, I support the idea of giving it back to the, to the public to decide on the issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Silverman is passing, and so we'll go to Don Bemis. That is all we've got.
Okay. There's, no. We've got, come on up, just state your name and address, and if there's anybody else that's, has not filled out a comment card that still needs to speak, speak now or forever hold your peace.
Hello, council. My name's Jason Garvin. I'm almost afraid to give my address, because I've been here two years, and I'm starting to think, like, I don't know if I'm technically in the city limits, so if I should stop now, but I'm at 33466, and I love being on this side of the state. The only thing, I'll be quick. The only thing I really want to mention was Navy vet, you know, I was a Boy Scout, altar boy choir. I have my nuclear engineering technology degree, master's in business. Wife, been together 10 years. I'm a brand-new father, four months. I give you my resume, because I think the point I want to get is, there's been a lot of, I've seen throughout my life, a lot of stereotypes perpetuated, you know, nationwide and community, community. At this point in my life, I can honestly admit that marijuana has been a part of my life longer than it hasn't. So, for individuals genuinely concerned, certainly George, I know your heart is in best interest with this community, and you're doing your job, everyone up, up here. But just keep an open mind, you know, all your neighbors, they all have secrets, and there's a reason they've been secrets for a long time. Like I said, stereotypes perpetuated, so, that's all. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks for your service.
My name's David Foley. I live at 732 Green Street, and he nailed it. I have nothing more to say.
Thank you very much. Scott, come on up.
Well, Scott, I wasn't planning on talking.
Come on up.
I'm Scott Wall. I've spoken to you before. I own New Age Laboratories here in town. I think the only reason I'm planning on, I'm going to say anything tonight, is that there seems to be a misunderstanding, that when we're talking about businesses that are tied in with the cannabis or hemp industry, that we seem to be talking about retail. Dispensaries and retail are only one-fifth of what you guys are considering, and it's only one-fifth, because you've already eliminated one from even consideration. Our laboratory is a safety compliance parameter that you're not opting into, and you've already hindered us from expanding our business here in South Haven. The other ones are grow operations and processing. Now, I will tell you that in my exposure to this industry, through trade shows and business meetings with entities, not only in our state, within other states, these are multimillion-dollar operations. These are not, as somebody spoke earlier, transients. These are not hobos. These are not hippies. These are businessmen and businesswomen. These are people that have more money than almost everybody combined in this room. These are well-financed industries. In order to even apply for any of these operations within the state of Michigan, you have to show that you have the legal and financial wherewithal and funding to even get a license to open one of these things. You can't just arbitrarily open up any one of these business operations. Now, the fact that we have delayed has cost my business here in South Haven already significant amount of money, and further delay stops me from being able to even apply for a safety compliance license. That has nothing to do with selling marijuana in South Haven. It means that other businesses within the state of South Haven cannot get their products tested through our laboratory here in South Haven, which means I can't hire more people. Testing of a product through our lab for a single sample could bring in $2,500 per sample, and there are people waiting three to four weeks to get turnaround on samples. That's thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars that could be transpired through our city, right here. Extra jobs, extra revenue, extra taxes. These are the things that were not being heard. These are the things that are not being considered, and it has nothing to do with somebody smoking, somebody inhaling, somebody utilizing marijuana in our city. It's business, and it's business revenue. And those things need to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I appreciate it. And I think that's very well said, and I just will say, I, it is my hope that we get the laboratory piece approved sooner rather than later. I hope we, as a council, I think all of us sitting up here have said it over and over again, we need to get that process approved. So, sooner rather than later. So, thank you for coming out and sharing that, and to your point, your business that's losing revenue. We're at a point, at this point in time, where we need to get a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-39, a resolution to submit the proposed ordinance to city voters during the November 2019 general election.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2019-39. This will be a roll call. Gruber?
Yes.
Reeser?
I want to be certain of what I'm saying yes to. This can still be a little confusing. If I say yes, it means yes, I want it to go to the November election, not yes that I support it being passed tonight. Am I correct?
Correct. To the voters. Yes, sir. You are correct.
And I say yes. Thanks.
Schlock?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
No.
Campbell?
Yes.
Smith? Yes. It is approved. It will head to the voters. So, I, again, get educated. Let's take a recess before we come back to Item 11. So, we'll only take five minutes, and thanks, everybody, for coming out that's taken off.
Just the perspective of year-round residents, but those who visit our city. Without question, our lake shore is the reason that people frequent South Haven. If tourists start to question their safety while at our beaches, there can be no doubt that it will have a negative impact on South Haven tourism. To be honest, when starting the petition, I expected a few hundred signatures. You may be aware that at this point, the petition has reached over sixteen thousand signatures from across the state, the country, and the globe. In order to make the amount of data I collected easier to consume, I decided to put together a graphic representation of where the signatures came from. And that's what you'll see here. This gives us a breakdown of signatures by state, and then a breakdown for Michigan signatures by city. I calculated the percentage of signatures that came within a thirty-minute drive of South Haven as well, assuming that those areas provide us with the most frequent repeat visitors. I can and will email all signatures and comments over to you, and so you know all South Haven signatures and comments will be highlighted in blue when you get that file. Before I go much further, I think it's important to state that it is of the utmost importance to me that our city leadership, first responders, and other residents understand that signers of this petition are not suggesting by way of the petition or by this presentation tonight that our first responders are not doing an amazing job. This is a small town. I went to school with a good number of the men and women who make up chaise. They are my friends and neighbors, and we are now raising our children together. These brave people are among the best of the best, and I think you'd be hard-pressed to find anyone in this tight-knit community who disagrees. The training that they've been through sets them apart and makes them supremely effective on scene. When the suggestion of lifeguards is made, it is not because we doubt what they are doing, it is because we think another layer can be added: the layer of active prevention. A lot of Michigan public beaches have moved away from certified lifeguards as a part of their beach safety protocol, and did so around the same time. In fact, in the state of Michigan, they ended their lifeguard programs at state park beaches around 1990 and replaced them with patrol programs. By 2001, the state reported no significant increase in drowning-related deaths at beaches where the changes were instituted. It was shortly thereafter that city and county-run beaches around the state began ending their lifeguard programs, including in South Haven. After our lifeguard program ended amid rising concerns over beach safety, South Haven instituted a beach flag system along with additional informational measures. The purpose of the flags, which are updated throughout the day as needed, are meant to inform beachgoers of current water conditions and whether or not it is safe to swim. This type of informational system is not unique to South Haven. In fact, Great Lakes and ocean communities alike have adopted this system, but there are problems. While the flags are meant to inform and prevent, indicators suggest that general beach visitors, especially those who are not local to that area, remain unaware of the seriousness of Great Lake and ocean conditions during red flag days. Most still believe that red flags are a suggestion, and that the flag color is related to the wave height, with little to no understanding of the dangers below the surface in the form of undertow and currents. Additionally, when a flag system is in place at a swim-at-your-own-risk beach, red flags or do-not-swim warnings are just that: warnings and unenforceable. Chris Brewster, former president of the United States Life Saving Association, likens a flag system without a cooperative, active lifeguard program to that of a fire safety program without firefighters. One of the primary issues with the swim-at-your-own-risk beach system, with or without flags, is the amount of time that collapses between when a swimmer begins to struggle and when a bystander along the shore recognizes the signs of a struggle, as a certified lifeguard is trained to do. In a drowning, minutes matter. Even with stellar response times, through no fault of responders, if a call isn't made within seconds of when a struggle ensues, it can be too late. Per a CDC study on the effectiveness of lifeguards, it has been found that the two most important preventative strategies are providing lifeguards in public areas where swimmers frequent and encouraging the use of such protected areas. During this study, multiple case studies were conducted, and each found improved success in preventing drowning where lifeguards were present. There were no exceptions. The reasons stated are simple. First is constant monitoring of swimmer safety. Second is enforcement of adherence to posted rules and flags. And the fastest response time possible is number three. While I have done a lot of research, admittedly, I am not even close to being an expert. I've never been a lifeguard, and I've never lost anybody to a drowning death. That is why we are requesting the formation of a cross-functional committee to investigate the possible improvements to our beach safety protocol that specifically address prevention through active monitoring and the viability of a certified lifeguard program. This ask is not about assessing whether or not current tools are operating as expected, but about opportunities to take things a step further. This is something that other lake shore communities are doing as well, and something that South Haven has done in the past. We believe that enough time has lapsed between the last review and now, and that the data has changed enough that new conclusions could be formed. The statistics on Great Lakes drownings, and specifically Lake Michigan drownings, are heartbreaking. This is certainly a Michigan problem, not just a South Haven problem. But we can and should seize this opportunity as a community to step forward as a leader in this space. We can raise the bar in beach safety through preventative measures and be a leader and a resource to lake shore community neighbors as they too evaluate their programs. Thank you very much.
You chipping into, or are you passing the buck?
I'm ready to go.
You're ready?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
You got it.
Okay, again, good evening. My name is Sean Russell. I'm here tonight in a slightly different role than Mrs. Doherty. Although I support her effort to expand the conversation of water safety in South Haven, I'm here to give the public and you a glimpse of what the lifeguards look like and what they did here in South Haven when we had them. I will give you a bit of my background and then offer up some of the effective ways the beach guards were a benefit to and even partners with the first responder organizations we have, especially as they were involved in our lakefront safety. Before I get to that, though, I need to offer an apology. As you'll be able to soon tell, I'm very passionate about lifeguards on our beaches. It was a part of my life, my job, my identity, and my maturing into later leadership roles. I have personally had many rescues, but more importantly than mine, there's a long history of guards that had hundreds of rescues and life-changing interactions on our north and south beaches. Bottom line, I know guards made a huge difference. That said, it was brought to my attention that I have appeared to be discrediting the South Haven Fire Department or South Haven Police Department and their efforts to do the best job they can in regards to our waterfront safety. That was never my intent. Nor did I intend to infer any type of support or lack thereof from either of these organizations or South Haven City staff in regards to a lifeguard program. For that, I apologize. I am only here to share my perspective from my firsthand experience as a lifeguard on our South Haven beaches. Okay, so my background. I'm a South Haven native. I grew up here, graduated from St. Basil's in the high school, went to Arizona State University, and eventually became an officer in the United States Air Force. After twelve years as an active-duty pilot, my wife and I chose to move our family back here to South Haven about six years ago. I still serve as an international guardsman, and we continue to build our real estate investment business here in South Haven. More specifically, my water safety background. I was a competitive swimmer from age ten. I started coaching our age group swim team and became a pool lifeguard in the high school, and eventually was tested to be a South Haven beach guard by somebody that's here in the audience tonight, the summer before my senior year. I was sixteen years old. I have worked as a lifeguard at indoor and outdoor public pools, high school and college facilities, private venues, apartment complexes, and of course, our Lake Michigan beachfront. I started as a junior guard on our beaches in 1989. Yes, that was before there was even a beach parking fee. And I worked my way up to eventually running our South Haven beach guard program as the beachfront coordinator. I also worked as a Van Buren County Sheriff's Deputy on the Marine Patrol, starting in 1999, which provided another good vantage point to influence firsthand the safety of our beaches and our lake. Yes, that's my resume. So what, right? Well, now you can appreciate what I'm going to, what I'm about to share. And that is a firsthand account of what the duties of our lifeguards were twenty years ago, when South Haven still had a beach guard program. These are not suppositions from Facebook on what people think we did or didn't do, or how ineffective a sixteen-year-old would be, which I will get to a teenager who just had a save yesterday in one of our neighboring communities at the end, or how dangerous it was for another person, another professional, to risk their life. Lifeguarding was our job. This is what we were trained for, and this is what we did. Obviously, first and foremost, we monitored the water, and specifically, the designated swim area. We changed flags, constantly monitoring conditions, making sure the right flag was flown. Guards experienced, the senior guards, and conditions in that beach were the ones to make that decision. And we made sure the public understood the conditions and complied. We never, in all my years lifeguarding, had someone in the water on a red flag day who refused to come out. It didn't happen. We educated the public on water safety, and specifically, our rules and water hazards. Think offshore winds, rip currents, non-coast Guard-approved safety devices, dangers of pier jumping, hidden rocks off the piers. We positioned the swim area marker buoys. We cleared the water for red flag conditions. Think storms, rough water, missing persons, often children, and of course, actual drownings. We kept people from jumping off the pier or swimming next to the pier, as is posted a South Haven ordinance. We made the public aware of rules such as no alcohol or dogs on the beach. We were watched for disorderly conduct and dangerous behaviors in a public park. We can see how that can quickly turn south based on what happened just a couple of years ago on our beaches. We maintained buoyed swim areas, the buoyed swim areas, free of boats, jet skis, dangerous behavior, and we had constant direct contact with the Van Buren County Marine Patrol. We provided minor medical, at least until EMS arrived, if applicable, bee stings, small cuts, et cetera. We permitted only Coast Guard-approved flotation devices, and eventually, we can go into that if there's questions on why that's a safety issue. We were the eyes and ears of the South Haven Police Department on the beaches. We worked hand-in-hand with the Van Buren County Marine Patrol, boats in the swim area, again, dangerous boating behavior, loading and unloading from the piers, et cetera. Each beach also had, always had, one radio with the Police Department, Fire Department, Van Buren County Marine Patrol frequency available for instant response. These are just a few of the collateral valuable benefits that a well-trained beach guard provided on a daily basis to our community. I'm not saying those are all going to work now, or that this is the best option. I just want to help, be a help, to inform the city council and public that this is an option that we might want to look at. So what now? I would suggest that the time is right to take a closer look at lifeguards as many as a possible added benefit to our water safety protocol here in South Haven. There are many communities that are still using this proven tool for open water safety. Maybe take a close look at how lifeguards today are handling swimmers on a red flag day. How do they ensure the right flags are flown for current conditions while still doing everything they can to allow the public to enjoy some of our waters? How do they help with locating a missing child near the water or a powerboat running in and out of designated swim areas? I know there are a lot of challenges in rebuilding such a program. Twenty years ago, we also dealt with these challenges. Finding the right qualified staff, it was tough. This will not be easy, but there are great resources, both national and even more so local, to help improve our beach safety. We have high school swim coaches that know the talent. We have local folks that are still in the area that used to be lifeguards. I understand we've got a few trained professionals on staff, and there are other programs nearby, such as Silver Beach, ones in Indiana, Illinois, and specifically, New Buffalo, which I'll talk about here in a moment, that we can look at. Also, please let me know if I can be of further help as you look at solutions. I'm happy to share both our successes and shortcomings of the program I led in South Haven many years ago. I don't know if lifeguards are the best answer for our beach safety, but I'd like to help critically analyze all of our options for safer beaches today. Whatever we decide as a community regards to bringing back a lifeguard program, I think it's important to be honest that there is a gap in water safety at all swim-at-your-own-risk beaches.
Before I end, just one thing I wanted to add, because he couldn't be here tonight. Someone that I knew, and his father was a resident here in South Haven, his name is Andrew Tellez. He's a lifeguard at the New Buffalo Beach, and he had a save yesterday. It's a very interesting, I won't read it, but it's a very interesting synopsis of what he saw and did yesterday. And it was a perfect example of how an eighteen-year-old lifeguard that was well-trained saw something that nobody else in the water saw, and we probably would have had a fatality yesterday had he not had that active rescue. It was his first one, and he's still kind of absorbing what happened and the fact that he was so instrumental in that, so he wasn't able to be here tonight. But I just want to reiterate that that happened just down our lake shore, and it's pretty impressive what these programs can do. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else that you brought with you that wants to speak, or I just want to make sure I, is there anybody else that wanted to speak from the public on the topic? Why don't you come on up, just state your name and address?
Mr. Mayor, we have a variety of common cards.
Oh, we do have common cards. Perfect, all right. Then why don't we just go ahead and call them up? Perfect.
So we'll do this in the same fashion that we did the last topic. So, first speaker will be Jason Pettit, followed by Pat Gaston.
Hello, council, and thank you for taking the opportunity. For all those that don't know me, I'm Jason Pettit, a lifelong resident, not in the city of South Haven, but adjacent to it. I'm here speaking, I would say, as both an advocate and a expert in the South Haven guarding system, as I guarded on the South Haven beach when we did have a program for six years. And as Sean alluded to, somebody here training him, I was the guy that got to douse him. Many of you know my father, and even swam for him at one time or another, and he was very much a passionate, as a lake shore community, of teaching our elementary kids how to swim. He always commented on, any kid can just take off walking from their house, no matter what their age, go out to the pier and fall off into, step off into twelve-foot or more water. And so he was very passionate about that. Taught me to swim at a very young age, competitive swimmer. I've personally seen a number of times of guards making a significant difference. Lost children, being, as Sean indicated, the eyes and ears of the police force. We very quickly could give them a complete description of a missing child because of our direct connection with the police radios that we did have. While I was guarding, they actually removed the gates that used to be on the piers. South Haven used to have gates on the piers, but because of a liability, from the simple standpoint of having the gates up there, the weather changes, the city not getting down there and locking them in time, somebody getting swept off, the city was liable. Without them, it became walk-at-your-own-risk. I believe that same issue applies to flags without guards. Conditions change on a moment, in a very few minutes. Doesn't matter how often they're changing them throughout the day, if you're not actively on the beach monitoring them, you do not have the proper flag for whatever the case is. And I believe the cities open themselves up to liability by having flags without guards. And I would concur with Sean Russell there, that anybody wants some insight from the history and opportunity to help train up and look into re-establishing a guard program, I'd be volunteering to spend my time and give my experience, because every beach is different from the way it's formed, and the challenges there, the jetties. Anybody can look at a aerial picture, and you notice the north and south beach have completely different orientations, therefore affecting the water's currents on them by themselves. Without going on too much, thank you.
Thank you. Help Travis out, your address?
My address is 993 Orchard Avenue, South Haven, Michigan, which is technically in Casco Township.
Thanks again.
Next up, we've got Pat Gaston, followed by Randy Greaves.
Pat Gaston, 97 Superior Street. I think this has been helpful tonight to hear the different remarks, and I certainly would applaud and really like to see a large discussion. I don't necessarily agree with whether we need lifeguards, I still have many questions about it, but I mean, I think that's what community conversation is about. We have, we have many, I don't know, five? Do we have five public beaches here in South Haven? I don't know exactly.
Seven.
Seven public beaches. Would we have lifeguards in every public beach? Would we, what would the hours be? In other words, would they be nine to, nine to nine? Because, I mean, obviously, people are still down there swimming all night or all day. So I mean, I guess that would, you know, do they close at five or six, and then we still have a problem? So, these are all the questions, I think, that maybe this community discussion could address, and then maybe come up with, I guess, as I'm right down by South Beach. I mean, I see it every day. And I think the world has kind of changed. I don't know if you could have a lifeguard down there that could really make people get out of that water. And we had policemen down there in uniforms, and the people still went in the water. We had, we had all kinds of red flags flying, people still went in the water. Would the lifeguards do have the authority, or what kind of? Do they arrest people when they go in the water? I mean, today's world is kind of different than it was back when I remember lifeguards being down there. So, I mean, it's a big question, and that's why I think maybe, I don't know how you're going to put a group together. I mean, I hope it'll be a diverse group, that that is just all with one viewpoint. I hope it's a diverse group, if you really are going to put together some kind of committee, that people from all sides, so.
Sounds good. Thanks for your comments.
Next up is Randy Greaves, followed by David Veenstra.
Hi, my name is Randy Greaves. I live at 1109 Hazel Street. I am a lifetime resident of South Haven. The first twenty years or so of that life was summer resident only. I was lucky enough to have the north beach as my front yard, growing up. I spent almost every day with the lifeguards on the beaches. And the program, I can tell you, after decades of being a part of that program, not officially, but as a member, resident member, and a constant beachgoer, beach bum, I guess, the program worked. It worked, and there was never any problems with enforcement, keeping people out on red flag days, keeping flotation devices, non-Coast Guard-approved devices out of the water. There's a level of authority that is gained over time, that is respected, and it just worked. And like I say, it worked for decades, and I don't see any reason why it couldn't work again. Thank you.
David Veenstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. As I go by the beach, and I see the red flags and a bunch of people in the water, it has often occurred to me, I just wonder why we might not have a city ordinance that says you can get fined five hundred or a thousand dollars for being in the water when the red flags are out, and then to perhaps post signs on the beach to that effect, to, you know, to tell people what the penalty is, and to put a phone number on there to call or text if you see someone in the water on a red flag day. I'm not speaking against a lifeguard program at all, but I just wonder if that's something we might have as part of this discussion. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
That's the last card we have on this topic.
Okay, very good. Oh, I got two more hands coming up, three more hands coming up. So, you just come on up, state your name and address.
My name is William Buska, 7207 Baseline Road. I was the last speech coordinator before the program closed. Good friends with Sean and Jason. I would like to offer my story. If there's any chance in the future of you getting together and wanting to speak to me, I just want to tell you about that last season. I can give you my phone number, you can contact me, or you can reach me through Sean. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Danielle Veenstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. And I walk down by the beach just about every day. And the other day, there were red flags on South Beach, and way south of where everyone else was, there were two young people in the water. And I didn't know if I had the authority to go and yell at them, tell them to get out of the water, but I thought if lifeguards were there, they'd be blowing the whistle. I grew up going to the beach, I grew up going to the pool where lifeguards were, and when they blew their whistle, you got your hind end out of the water. And I think that that would build, if we went back to having lifeguards. Somebody has to have the authority to go and say, "Get out of the water," because I could see that there was a rip current these kids were messing with.
My name is Patrick McKernan. I live at 251 Cherry Court. One thing I recall when they eliminated the lifeguard program was that somebody had done a study that had suggested, or had said, that they actually found there were fewer drownings at beaches where the parents were responsible, not a program where they had lifeguards. That situation may have changed since then, but that, I believe, was one of the reasons they eliminated the program at that time. As I said, things could have changed. The other thing I want to say, I actually find it a little ironic that this red flag day, the first thing I want to do is go down to the beach and get in the water, and most of a lot of other kids do. Now, maybe if there's a particular way of eliminating how far the children and the kids could go out, so that they could have fun, like, close to the shoreline or something like that, because they want to frolic in the water. That's one of the things they like to do. Children are having a good time. So, that's one thing I suggest, that maybe there's a balance between the red flag and a thing where, you know, they have buoys out there saying you can't have boats come in so far, well, maybe you could do something else. As I say, people could have a good time, because that's what they're there for. Thank you.
Thank you. Gail, come on up.
Gail Patterson Gladney, 914 Kalamazoo Street. I just want to say that I'm a longtime resident here, went to the schools in this area. I was hooked out of the swimming pool when I was in high school, because I can't swim, even after swimming classes. And at University of Michigan, I had to get help too. So, my son, I wanted to make sure he could swim. He became a lifeguard. He had the skill to be able to see that his fiancee in a swimming pool was drowning. People were all around, but she was going, getting into trouble, he could tell it, and he saved her, and they're married and happily ever after, I hope so. But I do have respect for the lifeguards, and I just want to say that we need to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Anybody else? See nobody? Very good. Any council comments at this time?
I just want to thank Cam for all their efforts in assembling the presentation, and it was awesome to have Sean with his historical background and what the guards did with the safety program. So, that was good background to get from you guys. Thank you.
It's our pleasure. We're happy to continue to help if needed.
Any other council comments? I guess I'll just, I'll chime in. I mean, Cam, Sean, thank you for coming. Thanks, everyone, for your comments. I mean, we take safety seriously at all levels, as you know, and thanks for, I mean, our first responders, they hide in the back, secretly back there, but they're always, they've always got our back, thank goodness, so, and we appreciate all that they do, and yes, they're amazing. We're, we're always concerned about all aspects of safety. We've seen the trends on Lake Michigan this summer. We had the hottest July on record, and we had the most drownings ever. We've seen higher lake water levels. We had, what, I think, a hundred water rescues this summer, we had eight in one day in Luddington. And if you've watched the media on the red flags, yeah, there is complacency. There's sign complacency. I think we have, they've given me a few suggestions for more signs tonight. I think most people toddle right past those signs, and, you know, they're, I'm still fascinated. I, you know, look at signs. So, you know, we closed our beach, and still people are getting in. I think someone commented- I think someone commented, we had police officers down there, and still people would go in, and it's a problem. And so, there, the dialogue is relevant, and I think you'll have, you know, ready ears, and I'm, I'm happy to talk. And I think the council's interested in hearing, you know, what the community has to say. There was mention of how many beaches? Yeah, seven beaches covering about fifteen acres of property. So, that's about eleven football fields you gotta navigate. So, our residents are, you know, readily, you know, that's a lot of real estate to cover. Past council looked at it. At one point in time, they put them in. At one point in time, they took them out. So, to say, can we look, I think it's fair to say we are willing to listen. We have invested in our, our shave staff. We will continue to invest in our shave staff. They will always have our support, and I, and there are several of them that will be valuable, you know, eyes and ears in this discussion. So, we're listening. I mean, I, I've, you know, had situations where I've gotten in trouble in the water, and part of it's just an understanding of the water and educating. And I, I know there's been different efforts through the year, through the years, to educate people on what the, what the lake can do. Because it's scary. It's fun at first, but until we figure out to tell people, "You gotta go in every couple of minutes." I mean, it gets, it's, you know, I had a situation where I got out there, and had I had a friend, I would have, you know, it could have been a statistic. So, it's, it's scary, and we need to make people understand it, respect it. You know, the red flag, you know, I think all of us that live here were ready to go out and, you know, smack some of these people and make them realize, "This isn't funny. This is a life," right? And they're gonna quickly look to us to fix this problem when they go in and, you know, make poor decisions. We were just out, we had a mayor's exchange the other day, and someone, you know, hopping off a pier. A good loud voice over here almost scared me off the boat.
I yelled at him.
It was good. It startled me. It was good. But again, it's, it's respect, it's understanding, and it comes from parents, it comes from the individuals, so there's work. Well, we listened. I, again, I'm, I'm willing to look. I think the council's willing to look to listen. We have the city staff, so we can take this all under consideration. So, I'll just leave it at that, and again, just say thanks for, you know, bringing it. We share your concerns, and we will listen some more. So, on that note, I think that's enough of that topic. I think we're ready to move on to item twelve, which is, interest in citizens in the audience, what we heard on items not on the agenda. So, if you haven't talked yet, or if you've already talked and you want to talk again about something we haven't talked about, this is your chance.
So, Mr. Mayor, we have two comment cards left, so they're, they're items not on the agenda. So, we'll just get them up here first. The first speaker will be Elaine Herbert, and then that'll be followed by Gail Patterson.
Very good.
Hi, I'm Elaine Herbert, and I do not want to be here. I should be in bed. I'm up at five o'clock in the morning. I work seven days a week. I do not want to be here. But it's an issue of great concern to me. I live at 404 North Shore Drive, on the corner of North Shore Drive and Oak Street Beach, just a few doors up from the Victoria Resort. This three-acre property used to be a quiet little bed and breakfast, non-conforming use, right behind my house, where I've lived for about twenty-five years. And it was owned, it was purchased a couple of years ago by a guy who has expanded that non-conforming use considerably. He has changed the house itself, the owner's previous owner's quarters, into what he calls the resort house, a giant party house, where he has a video on his website inviting one hundred plus of your closest friends to party in it. And he does it. He has, on his website, an invitation for wedding parties of over three hundred-plus people, tented with amplified music, catering, and more. I have been writing to Planning Administration and the city manager for, and calling for over two years, asking for enforcement on this property. And I get cut and paste canned responses that this is going to planning. I have written to my own council people who write back and tell me that they can't really tell me what's going on with this, because I have a bed and breakfast myself. And somehow, they can't respond to me, because I might have some kind of conflict with this. I don't have a conflict with this bed and breakfast. It's not my market. I don't do weddings. I don't do, I have never once in thirty-two years of running my business have I gone over my legal limit, ever. Now, on Saturday, Friday and Saturday night of Blueberry Festival, this resort is having a samours by the fire pit advertised in the Blueberry Festival adverti, uh, pamphlet. It's in the Herald Palladium, it's in the Sunday Tribune. Friday and Saturday night from nine PM to eleven PM. Has invited the entire Blueberry Festival into my street for some, free samours at the fire pit. I told the city manager about this days and week, a week, days ago, as soon as I found out about it, got his canned response that he was turning it over to code enforcement for whatever code enforcement was going to do. I said, "I want police protection on my street. I want it stopped." I got nothing, I got nothing, I got nothing, and then till I told him today, "I, I don't want to go to council. I hate going to council." So, I get a response today that it's all fine. He can do it. It's analogous, Siri, what, what does analogous mean? Similar to a residence having a personal party for a thousand or two people they don't know, coming to their house for fire pits, samours. This is not a personal residence. This is a commercial business, non-conforming use behind my house on Oak Street. Invite, there are no porta-johns a mile around. There are no trash containers. There's no parking for thousands of people coming behind my house. Is my five minutes up? Will you get the drift? I need help. I need, this is gonna set a precedent for these kinds of events in neighborhoods. We already got a hot air balloon on Monroe Avenue on the south side. Now, we got samours at the fire pit behind my house on Oak Street, at the Victoria Resort, where there's three hundred people coming to weddings, and a hundred people coming to the former residence. And it has to end, and I'm getting nothing but cut and paste responses from the city manager, who just got a raise this week, by the way. And so, I come to you, and I don't want to be here, I say again, I don't want to be here. I had to get up at five o'clock in the morning for another seven days' worth of weeks' work. I need help. I don't want this to go forward into any more neighborhoods.
That's time.
Thank you.
I will just say that we'll have a discussion about the concern about the public gathering. We can have that discussion. Do we like to add anything about the, what's been done to date?
We've received a variety of complaints from, from Ms. Herbert related to the property. City staff, myself, the assistant manager, and even the city's attorney has worked to contact the Victoria Resort, to make them aware of the concerns, to make clear the zoning code, to make clear that should events violate that zoning code, that enforcement will occur. We've made, uh, made outreach to the resort owner earlier today, saying this is the third issue that has been brought to our attention. I have responded to Ms. Herbert as it relates to this weekend's potential event, making clear that special events are not dictated by the council as it relates to private property. Further, we have sent certified mailings to the resort owner, making clear our expectations. As it relates to this weekend's event, yes, I responded to her earlier today. I'll happily forward that correspondence to all of you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Any others? One more?
Hello again. Gail Patterson Gladney, Van Buren County Commissioner. I just have a few points. Appreciate your time. I used to sit up there, so I know how you have a lot of patience. But I wanted to thank the veterans who did come out to the Veterans Service Open Office Open House today. And I thank you, if you know veterans, to spread the word about the full-time Veterans Service Officer in Paw Paw that we have now. I also wanted to reinforce the fact that the Van Buren County Veterans Medical Services honorably discharge veterans who are residents of Van Buren County, as well as their spouse and dependents, are eligible for dental care, inoculations, hearing and vision care. I'm not sure if that's just screening or exactly what they can get in that aspect. But I'm bringing this to you again, because the program is going to end September thirtieth. And any of you who know veterans or have residents in your wards, if you could pass on the information, there's a thousand-dollar limit per individual, and there's no income limitation to be eligible. Please have them can, contact the Health Department at 621-3143, extension 1336. And it's grant-funded. Any unused funds will be sent back to the state of Michigan. So, we want to make sure we have the services that our veterans need, and they know about this. Then the last item, I just wanted to say the county budget, 2019, 2020. A public hearing on the proposed county general fund ba, budget will be held two, at 2:50 PM on August thirteenth in the board meeting room in Paw Paw. And then on August twenty-seventh, beginning at two PM, commissioners will review the proposed budget in depth, and the public is invited to this meeting as well. And that's going to be at the same boardroom in Paw Paw. Thank you.
Thanks, Gail. Appreciate it. Is there someone else? Travis, do you say there were two? Or no, we're good. Any other comments? None. All right, that takes us to Public Works, right? Public Works Director, Mr. Bill Hunter. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening, Your Honor, council members. Real quick, going over some project updates for Department of Public Works. Splash pad, we had a planning commission meeting. Those plans are now in front of, they, they're at the state level. Once they get approved, we'll be able to go out for bids. We're looking, still looking at a September third city council meeting for bid approvals. So, that's coming along. Road diet, I'm still waiting to hear back from MDOT. We had one outstanding item, and that was with public outreach. We did have a public meeting, but MDOT was asking for minutes. We supplied them with minutes, but we're still waiting to hear back. Kids Corner Phase Two, we have contracts signed with Comptons. Just a reminder, that project is a hundred and two thousand dollar project, and we're looking at a, it's about a forty-five thousand dollar grant. Substantial completion is August twenty-eighth of 2019. Seventy-sixth project in the core Phase Four, I did get punch lists in for both of those, so we're working through those. Eighth Street is designed, a contractor is selected, and I just got notified that there'll be a pre-construction meeting, so August twelfth of 2019. So, maybe the next time anybody visits the Department of Public Works, that road will be passable, so yay. South Beach, we're still planning on repairing that, that storm outfall. That will be in the fall. Dumpster enclosure, that's got pushed out to August. That's the Water Street Dumpster Enclosure. Pearl Street has been completed, the road work, and so has the DPW building. Staff is working with GMB, GMB on security improvements at the DPW building. We're also working with GMB at the storage feasibility study at the DPW building. If anybody's been in the back there, there's a lot of transformers around. What we're trying to do is have one stor, cold storage area for all those. Staff is working with Edgewater on, on possible options for high-water areas that we have in the city limits. So, we're looking at the Dunkley Wells area, and we're also looking at Avery Park. So, those are the two areas. We're, we're hoping to hear back from them soon on that, and be able to present that to city council, those options. Motor Pool, we did have two emergency repairs in Motor Pool, believe it or not, emergency repairs. Vector Truck, Vector Truck, it's that, if anybody's seen it, it's a huge vehicle, has a big container in the back. That's the only vehicle we have to jet sewers. So, I had to make it a repair, because without it, we have nowhere, even if there's any plug to jet it. So, I had to rent a vehicle, have it here, before I could even take the other vehicle over. We're looking at thirty-four thousand eight hundred dollars worth of repairs. The one, we're, there's two, there's a pony motor and a regular motor. The pony motor went. That, that piece of equipment, if I'm not correct, Brian was actually involved, actually, in the purchase of that when he was the DPW director. So, it's got a lot of hours on it, and we use it quite a bit. The beach cleaner as well, believe it or not, the beach cleaner. It's that little piece of equipment right behind the tractor that picks up everything. Every morning, five days a week, that thing is out. Well, when that thing goes, moving parts, one thing goes, and it's a chain reaction. So, we're looking at, we looked at about fifteen thousand two hundred and twenty dollars, which put us two hundred and twenty dollars over our purchase, so I'm required to make it actually an emergency purchase. Water and sewer, HydroCorp still continues to do inspections in commercial residential customers. I will, since Natalie will not be here next month, I plan on doing actually a little training thing at the end, a little PowerPoint, like, on cross connections. We'll identify some, kind of explain it. Staff is working on a material inventory to the EGL, and that's due by January one of 2020. And lead and copper samples are due this year by September thirtieth of 2019. And last but not least, I'm working actually with, in a partnership with Southwest by Southwest Corner Cooperative, and we're planning on doing a DPW open house August twelfth. It's gonna be actually just a, like I said, it's a cooperative with them. It's gonna be identifying invasive species, so we'll have maps of invasive species that we are aware of. And maybe when, maybe when residents come in, they can maybe identify some other areas that they have, so we can have a more comprehensive plan. We're gonna have on their training material, for example, we'll have up a map where all the services that we're aware of for lead, lead services, well, that's the galvanized services, and copper services. So, if somebody is living at, like, my house, for example, and I know I've got a galvanized service, maybe they can assist us. So, we, it's, we'll have coffee, we'll have donuts. So, feel free to stop by, and they'll give you four to seven. So, that's it. Does anybody have any comments or questions about any of these projects or anything else?
And our water tower is about ninety-nine point nine. We have, the letters are done. Looking good.
Yes. Actually, those letters, believe it or not, the, the letters, the color, the name of the color of the letters is purple haze. We're waiting for the purple haze to come in, so I just like saying that.
I thought it was kind of fascinating. I thought, maybe they're gonna put stickers on it, because I'm watching them up there. They like outline them, they're up there, you know, a hundred feet up in the air, strung up by a string and getting the roller out. It's pretty, just a fascinating process to watch over the last couple of weeks.
Oh, yeah, and I think they did a great job. If you let, watch them do it, they're using rollers.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's.
I think they did a very good job, and it looks great so far.
That one, if you didn't see it, at one point in time, they covered it with a tarp, the entire structure. If you've ever seen a tower covered with a tarp, that's a heck of a tarp.
Yes, it is.
So, that was pretty impressive. And the other thing I was gonna say was, every now and again, MDOT throws the cones up, you know, they're doing work on the road. I'm like, oh, maybe this is, this is our sample. They're letting us play with it a little bit. They're, you know, shrinking it down, but it's not quite. Sorry, just had to rub it in. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. City manager.
Yeah, members of council, we had a few things that were real positive. Last week, myself and Jim Hettinger attended the open house ceremony for HTS Direct. So, for many years, the Applied Engineering Building that was originally tied to bund aluminum on Kalamazoo Street has sat largely vacant. HTS kind of cut the ribbon on their new operation in South Haven. So, if you haven't seen the improvements, please swing by there. It was just a great ceremony. They have space available to lease, should anyone be looking for commercial or industrial space. Next week, the fourteenth, I will be in Bel Air, Michigan. The Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund has asked for the city of South Haven to present more information to the trust fund board on the all-seasons grant application. So, we've been awarded ten minutes, and I believe that's a nine AM presentation, but I, I take that. that is a real positive sign. DNR staff was here earlier this summer and staff was able to present on the value of the application. So, cross your fingers, this could be a good sign. Also, to put onto your radar is September 9th, 9919, at 7:00 PM. The Housing Commission, the city of South Haven's, oh, city council, and then also the South Haven Charter Township Board will be invited to take part in a joint meeting to review housing issues impacting all of South Haven. The intent for this session is it will occur at South Haven Public School and the Integrated Learning Center. Earlier this year, a gentleman from Housing Next, Ryan Kilpatrick, came down and gave a talk as part of the Thursday Night Speaker Series. Ryan will be leading the conversations. We are sharing his expense between the city, the Housing Commission, and the South Haven Charter Township Board. The intent is to focus on the six acres that the city controls through our local development finance authority, commonly referred to as the Overton Site. That will be part of one, or one part of the conversation. The intent is to begin the process of developing a redevelopment plan for that site, but then also to try and pull in the Housing Commission, pull in the township, so that we can look at more multifamily projects, townhomes, single-family homes, et cetera. So, that will be open to the public. It will be a meeting between the three boards, but the public can certainly attend. And that will be on the 9th of September at 7:00 PM at the high school. And we'll have lots more information posted on that in the coming days. And then, just a reminder, Center Street is progressing. The city's Downtown Development Authority, the city council have taken a variety of steps to get that information out. But the thing I just wanted to stress for any of the downtown business owners and just interested citizens, we are gonna be hosting some upcoming sessions at city hall for business owners, for residents, et cetera, to come learn more about the project plans. We put all of that stuff up onto the city's website. You can find it on the website at south-haven.com. But for anyone curious, it's gonna be Tuesday, August 20th, at 9:00 AM in this room. And the project team will just be going through the details of the reconstruction plan. Mr. Mayor, members of council, those are my comments. I'll happily answer any questions.
And I will just comment, this citizen earlier today pointed out the fact that you got a raise and I will just say, I voted for that raise. I will vote for that raise again. You're an outstanding city manager. You're an asset to this community and we are lucky to have you here. So...
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. City council comments?
First, I would like to say thank you to Brian Deset for, like you said, for being a wonderful city manager. And I thank you for always being available for any community concerns. There hasn't been anything too small or too big that you weren't available for. The second thing I wanna say is that I've been a resident here in the city of South Haven all of my life. I graduated from South Haven High School and I chose to stay here and raise my family here because it was a safe place to raise your family. And I think I speak for the community of which I live in, that I want South Haven to continue to be a safe place where other families might wanna relocate to and, and stay. You know, the families that are here will wanna stay and that we will continue to have people that will wanna come visit here. If we're not a safe place, people won't wanna come and visit South Haven. If we're not a safe place, people won't want to continue to live here. And so, I just, you know, wanted to put that out there, that we want South Haven to remain like it is, a safe place.
No comments.
I'll make up for it.
Here we go.
Again, appreciate Cam and Sean with the efforts you did tonight. Also, wanna thank the public for coming out and, you know, the initiative, that's actually part of the law that was passed, to give the community the opportunity to go forward with a vote. And that is a democratic process. So, that's good. I'm even also glad that Elaine brought to the attention what was happening at Victoria Resort, considering the non-conforming use of the commercial events, not this coming weekend, the commercial events. And I know staff's been working really hard, following the right steps and ramping up what needs to be done to try to get enforcement. And in fact, I think there's even a face-to-face coming up this week. And again, that's a great job that Brian and staff has been doing and I appreciate everything that Ryan does. Once again, the Blueberry Festival is this weekend and I encourage everyone to come out and participate and be a part of the Blueberry Festival. I discourage any males 55 to 59 who are running the 10K, stay home.
Heard it here first. There you go.
I'm not running the 5K, just the 10K.
Yes, 10K. There you go. All right.
Couple of weeks ago, we had some extremely high winds, some dangerous conditions. And I wanna applaud Kate for actually taking the initiative to go ahead and shut down our South Beach. I think she made the right call and so I wanna back her up on that. So, I think it was a great job.
Last Friday, I was able to participate in the mayoral exchange with the city of Portland, Michigan. And during that event, I thought about what it is that makes a city unique. And as I reflected on what makes South Haven unique, I decided that it's not the lake or the lighthouse or the beaches. It's, but it's really the people. And the people that see a way to make our community better and work to make that happen. And a good example is the people that were here tonight, that came here, that gave us input. You're trying to make the city better and I wanna thank you for it. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
We're very fortunate in our town to have Hospice. They do a great service for our community. And Saturday night, they had their big fundraiser and it was approximately 250 people there. And I wanna give a special thanks to Dan and Mary Nolte for generously giving their property and sponsoring it. I also wanna thank the 16 Wine and Beer Breweries that were there giving free samples, even though I don't drink, but I thought it was very nice they did it. A special thanks to Phoenix Street Catering for the great food that they provided and the music that was there. According to, the person from Hospice today told me that they raised $100,000 in that one evening, which is wonderful for our community. Of that, I believe it's $43,000 our local businesses gave, which is just amazing, their generosity. And they don't have to do that. So, I just wanna thank everyone for attending and for being part of it. It's a great, great help for our community. Thanks.
Thanks, Jim. All right, I'll just wrap it up. Again, thanks everybody for coming out, Blueberry Festival this weekend. Go out and have some fun, eat some blueberries. I also, was at that mayor's exchange. It was a great event, nice chance to show off our community. Thanks to city staff for making it fun. And I think we're headed there in a few weeks with boxes of blueberries to show off South Haven. So, that's it. Thanks for coming out. I will seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion to second to adjourn. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Thanks. Have a good night.